Welcome to another meeting of the Lorain County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorain County Community College Education Station. The Lorain County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Aliria.
I would like to lead these to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice
I would like to thank each and every one of you for taking the time to come out this evening. It's a pleasure to have you and it's a pleasure to be here. And I'd like to thank the Township Trustees and the residents for allowing us to use their facility. Fred, I believe you're the only Township Trustee here?
John.
John, I'm sorry. You're the only Township Trustee here tonight?
I apologize for that.
John, would you please come up and accept this on behalf of the Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Blair, please.
This is our appreciation, a certificate of appreciation for you, the New Rusha Township, allowing us to get a team to come here today.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to have you. Amy Dunham.
At 7:30 there will be a presentation by Oberlin Design Initiative under Resolutions 1, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
There was no personnel action on the summer sheet?
Commissioners, I will be asking for a technical session to discuss a disrepairing issue with regard to personnel.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Can we take one minute, Betty? Do you mind if we?
No, I think we ought to. I was looking at him. I thought people might want to know who they are.
Introduce the staff. We'll start with you, Ron, if you please give your name.
I'm Ron Twining, Community Development Director for the Commissioners.
Levon Newton, Purchasing Director for the Lorain County Commissioners.
John Rokis, Budget Director for the Commissioners.
Dan Bilman, Director of Solid Waste for the Commissioners.
Jerry Yanus, Assistant Lorain County Prosecutor.
Jim Corderes, Lorain County Administrator.
Isn't that a fine-looking crew? They work on your behalf.
Thank you.
Under Commissioners Number 10, the President of Commissioners.
Oh, yes, Teresa and Miss Upton, please.
Teresa Upton, May I, Ms. Blair, for the Torrance Board of Commissioners?
Thank you, Teresa.
10, approve the Commissioners' Board Meeting Minutes and waive the reading of the same for April 3rd, 10 through 17 of 2003.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Authorize the release or retain it to the amount of $1,390.76 to Charles Acres Construction Inc., Lorain, Ohio, for work performed on the Derkey Road Culvert 0183 project. This project is completed and all necessary paperwork has been received.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, instruct the clerk to advertise for second public hearing for Community Development Blah Grant, CDBG-FYO3 Small Cities Program. This notice will be published on the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on June 6th and 13th, and the hearing will be held on Thursday, June 19, 2003 at 10:00 a.m.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, approve the 2003 Close the Loop Grants in the amount not to exceed $84,956 to purchase products made from recycled materials. 13 communities apply and they are required to match 50 percent for Amherst City, Carlisle Township, Columbia Township, Aliria City, Aliri Township, Huntington Township, La Grange Township, Anne Village, Lorain City, New Rusha Township, North Ridgeville City, Oberlin City, and Village.
Madam Chair, maybe Dan would like to talk about that, if you would, and also there is a question from Penfield Township. They are in the audience, and so you might like to address that as well.
Do you want to just take your?
No. No, you need to come to the microphone, I guess.
Dan, if you have the information, you might want to name some of the projects that we'll be funding.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Dan Bilman, Lorain County Solid Waste Director. This program has been in effect probably for about three years now. It's limited to $70,000, although sometimes, in particular tonight, I've asked the Commissioners to go beyond the $70,000 because the projects were good projects, and I felt that it would be justified. Amherst, they've asked for $4,837 for trash receptacles and four grills. The project total is going to be about $7,255. Carlisle Township, they're going to put furniture up the park and fire station. That amount is $9,414, and it's a $14,120 project. Columbia Township, they're going to put benches and planters and a couple signs out. Their grant is for $6,655, and their project total is $9,983. City of Aliria is getting $10,000. Their project is $15,600, and it's a roof replacement with a bathhouse in Cascade Park, and they're using a new type of roofing material made out of recycled rubber and recycled plastic. Aliria Township, they've asked for $4,390. Total project is $6,584, and they've asked, they're going to be using their money for recycled tables and chairs. By the way, all these products are made out of recycled materials. They've all got generally anywhere from, I think the minimum we have on anything here is about a 30 percent recyclable, most somewhere 50 to 100 percent. Huntington Township, they've asked for $2,000. Their project total is $3,005. They're going to use it for planter boxes at the Town Hall. La Grange Township and the Village went together. Their grant is $7,333. Their project total is $10,550. And they're using it for picnic tables at the community park. Sheriff, we still okay?
Lorain City's $10,000.
Their project total is $29,051. They're going to be using it for a pavilion and recycled concrete for their parking areas in a park. New Rusha Township, their grant is $10,000. Their project total is $20,650. They're using it for fencing out here and gates for a park and ice skating rink. North Ridgeville City, they've asked for $6,699. Their project total is $10,048. They're going to use it for signs and hardware for the parks and their sports complex. Oberlin City, they've asked for $3,928, and their project total is $5,892. And that's going to be for pedestrian bridges and parking stops for the recreation center. Wellington Village, $10,000. That project total is going to be $25,894. They're going to put quite a few trash containers and planters down in the downtown area, and that's how we come up with the $84,956 in grant. And I would recommend that the Commissioners would approve it.
Thank you. I think these are great projects. It gives back to the community, and it's something that the residents and the public can use. And I saw on there that one was for an ice skating rink, and here in New Rusha Township was really.
It's sort of fencing around the township.
They're all good projects, good things that give back to the community, and that's what makes it worthwhile in recycling. And if anybody has any questions, please don't hesitate to ask, because if you don't ask, you're not going to get an answer.
Madam Chair, Eleanor Gennant would like to ask about Penfield's grant, and I just want to say that Dan, in his letter of recommendation to the Commissioners, you said that Penfield Township's proposal did not fit the criteria that was outlined in the grant application. So...
That's correct. It's actually a reuse project, not a buy recycle project. They're not buying anything to recycle. It's already within the building. It's a good project, but it doesn't fit the criteria of this particular grant.
We have requested that you fund up to $10,000 to help us on redoing our town hall. Our town hall was a former Baptist church, and it was built in April of 1855. And in 1910, the Baptist Society turned it over to the township to use as a town hall. Now, our buildings that we have currently are much too small, so we opted to redo the town hall. Madam Chair, the pictures you're looking at are the beams, and I'll explain that further. When we started redoing it, the thought in mind of just fixing it up the way it was, we found these beautiful hand-hewn beams in there, and we decided to go a step further. Now, that's reducing because we did not tear it down. It's reusing a 148-year-old building and recycling the same building. So I have asked for up to $10,000 to help us on this project. We have over $30,000 extra in it because we are reusing it. We had to redo the heat, the electric, the water, everything, not the water, the air. So I've asked you to consider, I know Dan didn't recommend it, but we are closing the loop definitely by using this building over again. So please consider our request.
Will you be using recycled material in?
The whole building is recycled.
Well, yeah, because it's old.
It's 148 years old.
What are you going to use? What do you need the $10,000 for?
To help on the whole project. It took almost $3,000 just to clean up the beams. The wings are building, the original, the door frames are the original. So because we are recycling, it's cost a lot more than if we could just cover it over. So that was why we were asking.
Okay, Eleanor, there is a match? Do you have the match?
We've got over $30,000, and we're going to have to put into it. So we'll be matching two to one, actually.
So you're saying you use that as an end kind? Is that the type of match that you're requesting, Dan?
It's 50 percent.
This particular grant is a 50 percent cash match.
That's what I wondered.
So it's going to be all cash. Plus, we had to jack it up because she was afraid the beams weren't strong enough, so we had to put metal under it. A lot of things were extras because of that.
And what are you doing with the building after it's completed?
It's going to be used as a town hall, meeting hall, 4-Hs, you name it, same as we've been using the other building.
Do you have the money available for it, Dan?
We would take it out of another line item other than the buy recycle grant, but yes, we could probably do that.
And it would fit within the plan to do that, to take the money from somewhere else?
In a reuse environment, yes. Generally, and I don't want to degrade this project any, but generally before, when we do grants, we give them, they do the proposed, people give us the proposal first and then do the work. Well, this work has already been started. It's quite a waste to complete it. I don't know whether you want to take that into consideration because we'd be paying for this building if they wanted to do it tomorrow and then come back next week and ask us for the money for recycled materials. We need to do it beforehand. I think we're setting the precedent of doing it after the fact, but it's strictly up to you. It's a good project. It really is. It's nice.
Yeah, I go by there all the time and see it.
Can I rebut that, please?
Pardon me?
I said I'd like to rebut his statement. Originally, we were just going to redo, tear down the old plaster, it's horsehair plaster, just put down the wall. Well, the one wall was wavy, so they tore the plaster down, and they found these beams. So then they tore down another wall, another wall, put some ceiling down, and they said, "This is too beautiful to cover up." So we didn't have time to tell you, hey, we didn't even know we were going to do it, right? We were already in the process, and then we didn't have time to give you a proposal that it's being done. So that's why it's not as though the building's all done, and then we come and say, "Oh, yeah, we should have."
Well, it's certainly, I think, in the best interest of the public to preserve old buildings, because I've gone where they've preserved old school buildings, and they've made like little villages of old buildings, and it's absolutely beautiful. And on the corner where you're at, it's a lot of traffic, and it's highly visible. I think it's something that's worth sharing with the public. I personally, if we have the money, I would do it, and then consider others as they come in. And I mean, we don't have to grant everyone everybody's request, especially, like you said, Dan, if, you know, come in and want something done on this building after the fact, that's another issue. But I believe you do really have a good project there, and like you said, you can't get any more recycled than an old building. It's up to you, Commissioner Blair.
Thank you. Would the money come from this Close the Loop, or would it come from another source?
It would come out of Plan Implementation Fund.
Plan Implementation Fund. Okay. Do you need other paperwork before we do that, or could we approve it tonight?
Approve it tonight, and we just special funds it off, that's all.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move we approve the Close the Loop Grant request as outlined, and also include the request from Penfield Township for $10,000 funding to come from the Plan Implementation Fund.
Second.
Thank you very much, on behalf of you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing it every time I go to Columbus.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Under Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board, authorize appointment of various members to Lorain County Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board, Joan P. Villarreal, effective July 1st, 2003 to June 30th, 2006, and Judy Lynn Newoff, effective July 1st, 2003 through June 30th, 2005, which will fill the unexpired term of Judith Wright, who resigned.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, receive and generalize to County Engineers annual report on condition of ditches under County Maintenance Fund for the year 2003, and authorize Lorain County Auditorium to continue maintenance fees raised as recommended by County Engineer to clean and maintain various county ditches for the year 2003 extending to 2002.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Approve an entry into participation agreement between Lorain County Board of Commissioners and Ohio Department of Transportation for the purchase of sodium chloride rock salt for 2003-2004 winter season. An estimated 10,000 tons will be delivered, stack piling 300 tons at the Columbia Township Garage, and stack piling 3,000 tons at Lorain County Garage.
So moved.
A second.
Discussion.
I just want to comment that this agreement is due to ODOT by June 15th. I thought they had until the end of June, so I wanted to make that announcement. Any other political subdivisions that need to do this need to see that ODOT has it by the 15th of June.
Yes, Elizabeth?
Elizabeth Robinson Oberlin. Once before, I had mentioned when this sort of agreement came up, the difficulty was using sodium chloride along the railways because of the damage it can do to vegetation, trees, and so forth. And at the time, it was explained that this is what the state offers, and it's bought under a special purchase, at special prices, and so forth and so on, and therefore it's more economical to use rock salt. I guess at this point, I would simply like to ask whether someone could look into comparative pricing for alternatives to sodium chloride for this usage, and then perhaps reconsider or see if there would be some effort made to encourage the state to move to some alternative use.
I don't see anyone from the Engineers' Office here.
Yeah. I spoke with Mr. Ron. He wasn't going to have somebody get to that. I'm sure our person involved will take a look at that issue and work with the engineer, which will be back, same to the boy here and the engineers. Okay? Is that satisfactory, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Under Mental Health, authorize appointment Dr. Thomas H. Vornicki as a member of Lorain County Board of Mental Health, effective July 1st, 2003, expired June 30, 2007.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
It's 7:30. You have to do your appointment right now.
Good evening. I'm Casey Figgitt. I work with Oberlin Design Initiative and pleased to have some of our other staff and aboard here. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present tonight. We're presenting with a request for $20,000 to support a fellowship program for social entrepreneurs in northeast Ohio and Lorain County. It's been our pleasure in the past two years to work with the county on a few different projects, a Green Building Code document in coordination with Ron Twining's office, and a presentation on economic development that we had down at Oberlin. So I'm going to work with you in the past. The program, a little bit of background, we've been following the Quiet Crisis series that's been featured in The Plain Dealer, and it's been talking a lot about how northeast Ohio loses recent college graduates at a slightly alarming rate. And we've realized that it's an opportunity to run an innovative program and do something really fun and turn a neat idea into reality that has kept us and other people that we know and work with, who have recently graduated from Oberlin and Kase and other places, is what's kept them here. So with our board, we developed a program to give recent college graduates who've got a really an idea for a business, or a project, or a nonprofit organization, the opportunity to turn that organization or project into reality. What we want to give them in order to do that are five things. We want to give them some modest operating support, some mentorship, connections to the various regional leaders in the area, want to give them some office space, and some professional development training. The projects that we are looking to support are projects that would build the regional economy and improve quality of life. By so doing that, if we are able to launch a whole cadre of young leaders who've got an even vision, we will be able to create a better environment, more exciting environment for people to be in here, and to, they would then attract more and more people to stick around in the area, so we could start a positive cycle going. There are many other fellowship programs in other parts of the country. This one is unique in three different ways. One is that it's focused on sustainability, that is the intersection of economic development, environmental health, and community health. It's also different in that it's focused on the specific region rather than being a national program. It's focused on Lorain County, Cuyahoga County. And what it will do is to really concentrate efforts in a specific area and enable different efforts to build off of each other, learn from each other, and really develop a community of young leaders who are moving forward on cool projects. The third way it's different is that it gives the opportunity for regional entities, businesses, governments, to submit a request for proposal or submit an idea for a project. For example, I can explain kind of how this will work in an example. Multimodal transport is an area that many people have identified as an important area for Lorain County and other growing areas. And also sustaining local business is another important area. So in the fall of this year, for example, Lorain County Transit and the Chamber of Commerce may each submit ideas to our application process that would say, Lorain County Transit might say, "Can you help us find a project that would build ridership and increase the accessibility of the transit?" And Lorain County Chamber of Commerce might submit a proposal that said, "Can you help us come up with a project that would, sorry, that would build local commerce locally owned businesses?" And then, and an applicant to the application process, to this fellowship program, could come up with a proposal like the following. You've got an idea for a, you ever been on MapQuest? Where you go on MapQuest on the internet and you say, "I want to go to a certain place," and it tells you, it gives you a map, tells you how to get there. Well, we could invent a similar strategy for this area. You type in where you want to go, and then it tells you how to get there, either by car or by Lorain County Transit or other transport places, and it highlights individual businesses. So it's a project that both builds ridership, builds accessibility, and increases the opportunities for local commerce in the area. And then a fellow would apply to that project, they would work with those various entities to really design and fully home the project, get it really worked out well, and then our, the board that we would build for, to oversee the project, would decide how to give them the fellowship or not. And once we give them the fellowship, they would have up to two years of support, as I said before, some operating support, mentorship from regional leaders, connections, office space, and professional development training. That's the basic description. Again, our budget is for about $170,000. Our goal is to launch three fellows in the spring of 2004, and the outcomes that we see are that we're going to have over time, over the next five years, an improved image of northeast Ohio, helping it become a place where people want to graduate and stick around rather than going off to San Francisco or New York, as many college graduates do, a place where they can really stick around and invest themselves, which would help to build the regional economy and quality of life. Other specifics, we'd like to launch 10 fellows in the next five years of those, we assume about eight will stick around. Three organizations, our goal would be for three organizations to have expanded since their inception and to have launched three profitable businesses. Our goal is that at least five extra people in addition to the fellows would have employment as a result of the projects run by the fellows, and that there would be greater social network opportunities because of the community that we would have built through this program, we will have built through this program in fact. Our request is for $20,000, and thank you very much for considering it. I'd take any questions.
Well, we want to thank you for your presentation, but I'm sure you're aware that the county right now is facing financial cuts in our budget, and we're going through the budget now, and it might be something, I can only speak for myself, and then I'm sure Commissioner Blair will speak for herself, but it might be something that we would look into in the future. But I might suggest, have you gone for any other grants?
Yes, yes, we have.
Have you been successful?
Not yet. We have a planning grant.
Well, don't give up.
I won't. Planning grant into the Nord Family Foundation, and we're in conversation with 10 other admissions, at least, just working on that, or fundraising a lot. I've had two successful conversations with, for smaller amounts of money. And Oberlin alone, who works in Cleveland, has agreed to support the program.
You might want to even talk with Dr. Church at the college.
We've been working with Glide at the college, and they're really interested in the program and worked out a partnership with him for a few of the pieces of it.
Madam Chair, thank you, Casey. We have talked about this before. I would like you just to tell the audience a little bit about what Oberlin Design Initiative is, because I think that's kind of what you're even talking about now, and introduce your compatriots in the audience, too.
Glad to. I'd love to. My coworker, Annabeth Macy, and our new hire, Assistant Director, James McConaughey, and then our board members, Jeff Bowman and Ron Schwankenwald. About two years ago, Annabeth and myself and our other co-director, Morgan Williams, started... started Oberlin Design Initiative after graduating from the college. And our goal was to create an organization that created partnerships between people in the college and people in the community to address various sustainability needs. Issues of economic development, issues of environmental quality, issues of community health. Since that time, we've done a whole lot of, a whole lot of projects. Projects in land use, in energy efficiency, in downtown revitalization, just to name a few. It's been a fantastic experience and I've just learned a lot from working with the people of Lorain County.
Yeah. Commissioner, I've had an opportunity to be with some of these fine young people. Certainly got a lot of moxie in the group, a lot of confidence. If the funding isn't coming now, I'd like to be able to put them on the list that we use at the end of the year to at least make sure that they get possible reconsideration when we're looking at funding projects, so that we don't lose track of this fine organization. That doesn't guarantee, because it didn't appear that there was going to be a support for funding right now, but I think that we should at least keep them on the dock somewhere to revisit, should you not be able to fund them at this time.
Yeah, I'd be willing to review it later in the budget.
And I would just say that you submitted some very fine letters of recommendation along with your request from the Chair of Oberlin City Council, Bill Gendra, from Carol Hoffman of the Access Program, from Don Connectus, Managing Director of Glide, and from Frank DeTello, President of Lorain County Chamber. And I think that you're a fine example. You're already doing what you want to expand to do, and I applaud you for that. So I fully support your request.
Thank you.
Mr. Portis, may I, Mr.?
Well, for a change, absolutely pleasant. Commissioner, I'm going to pass to you a Workforce Investment Act SOFRAN agreement for our workforce development agency. We need to get that signed. I'm really pleased to tell you that we've been awarded an increase for our next fiscal year of $1,620,000 that we're going to receive this year. There's an additional $315,000 in adult P-Y-2003 allocation. There's an additional $402,000 in dislocated worker, $2,000, the next coming year. And there's an additional $344,000 in the youth programs.
How much in the youth, please?
$344,770, to be exact, for sure. Mr. Ogle has done a wonderful job communicating with the state and continuing to seek resources to provide for the residents of Lorain County. As you know, we're facing some troubled times within our economy. We have dislocated workers and people out of work. It's a real pleasure to be able to tell you that he was able to secure over another million dollar worth of funding to ensure that some of the needs are met for those folks. And I don't know if I'd have the pleasure of sharing that kind of good news with you. So I would ask that you sign that sub-agreement and we get it right down to the state real quick before they change their mind and pass any more revenue enhancement issues down there than they take any more money away from us.
Do you need a formal motion?
Why don't we do it by formal?
Also, also moved.
Second. This is surprising, you know, with all the cuts. They talk about the state, that we wind up getting additional money. It's amazing to me.
Well, I'm just going to be grateful that we, we'll be able to provide additional services to a list of eligible candidates within Lorain County that otherwise would have went on the circuit.
Well, this is a pleasure to sign this one.
Ms. Swire?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll remind you again, I would wish to have an executive session at the conclusion.
Do you have anything else, Jim?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Anderson, this is a time of respect.
I also need to discuss an executive session, a man is pending, the commissioners.
Check this out, let's hear this one.
I'm also going to need an executive session, listening commissioners. So I would like to request that the commissioners have an executive session. Pending litigation.
Thank you.
Commissioners report?
Commissioner Blair?
Thank you, ma'am Chair. I just, tomorrow is the Lorain County Community Alliance meeting, and we are going to visit the city of Avon. And then Friday, June 13th, is NOAACA's regular monthly meeting. It will be at nine o'clock, followed by their third or fourth annual transportation summit. Will be at Cleveland State University. And I believe both Ron Twining, our Community Development Director, and Jim Cordett, our county administrator, will be making presentations at the summit, NOAACA summit. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you, ma'am Chair.
Thank you. The only thing I have is either Jerry or Jim, I would like you to look back into the Steel Workers Union contract, because I hear that there's some disagreement on the 30-day window that we had to either approve or reject the union contract. And it depends, I think they presented the contract to the board on the 18th, or at least to you, Jim. And the question is when they presented it and when we actually approve or reject it in that 30-day window. And it looks like we may have gone a little bit over the 30-day window and actually our vote would be voided, and that the agreement may be valid. So I would appreciate if either one of you don't know which one.
Well, I certainly haven't answered that, but I think it's a better issue reserved for executive session discussion as allowed for pending negotiations, pending litigation, potential litigation.
Okay. Thank you. And then I'd like to discuss an executive session. We go into...
Old business, number one. Under number one, under Workforce Development, authorized appointments of David A. Updugrav and Homer A. Verdant to Lorain County Workforce Development Board, effective May 29, 2003.
I thought we were going to have terms with these, and that's why it was held.
Commissioners, I'm just bearing to weeb out. I have not had, at the time, properly addressed the issue. I would ask that we continue to table this. I did speak with Mr. Ogle on it, but being that we were at conferences week and those short families between our meetings, I have not gotten to a chance to review the regulations for what we're allowed to do. I'm certainly comfortable saying that we can establish terms of office, but I want to make sure that the code doesn't address what those terms of office should be. And I am not prepared to advise you properly on that.
But the others that are already appointed to this board don't have terms set either yet, so...
That's problematic. We'll get it still somewhere.
Well, perhaps while we do that, we could establish terms for them as well.
I think we'd have to. But my thought is, should we appoint these people and then establish the terms for everyone at the same time?
I think that's wrong. She better let for Jerry to hear us.
My review of the matter, Commissioner, is that there aren't any specific terms provided for in the code, and indicates that these members serve at will. So at the present time, I don't think there is any set term limit or term for these appointments. It probably would be a good idea for the commissioners to think about establishing a policy that would set a specific term so that people, when they're appointed, they'll know how long they want to serve. At the present time, I don't believe there is any term whatsoever in that they are, they serve completely at the pleasure of the commissioners.
Commissioner Blair, how do you feel about appointing these people and then establishing the terms for the entire board at the same time?
Ma'am, I'll offer a suggestion. I would think it would probably work well if we established a one-year appointment with up to two renewals, not to serve more than three years continuously. This way, there would be a break and an opportunity for people to serve on the board, so that we didn't have a lifetime appointment.
Could you repeat that, Jim? One year up to what?
Well, one-year appointments that can be renewed, two additional times for a total of three years, and no one is to serve more than three years continuously. They would have to take a year break at that point, and if they wanted to come back to the board, they could be reappointed after they're off for a period of a year.
Would we stagger these so that they're not all up at the same time?
I think we should. I think if we're going to do it for the whole board, I would certainly like to come back with the list of the board members right now and present you with a list of staggered terms so that we did not unduly disrupt the whole board at one time.
Do you know when the next Workforce Development Board meeting is?
No, Commissioner, I do not.
I think, I don't know if you missed my question. My question was, do you think that we should appoint these people now and then establish the terms for the entire board at the same time?
Given what Mr. Anderson said, it doesn't appear to be a problem, does it?
You could either go ahead and appoint them, and at the moment, they would remain at will, or perhaps you might want to appoint them for the remainder of this calendar year and at the end of this year, consider how you want to stagger all those appointments or anything. If you just want to appoint them right now, they would be at will for the rest. That would be their status.
Okay, I would move to appoint them tonight and appoint them at will until we establish terms for the entire board.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Swire? Aye. You'll give us a schedule, right?
Yeah, I'm going to cover a little plot book guy.
In your job description. Thank you.
Under the engineer's improvement of the contract between Lorain County Board of Commissioners and City of Olmstead Falls, to utilize a portion of the city's sanitary sewer system due to Columbia West River Treatment Plan and Columbia Station being abandoned and redirect wastewater to the Southern Wastewater Treatment Plant, operated by Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. $56,643 tab and fee is required from Lorain County Fire Two Connection, but will be recovered through assessments when the construction of the lift station and force maintenance upgraded.
Ma'am Chair, we had some discussion at the last meeting. Were you supposed to provide more information to us?
Well, we both were, I think, a little bit. We both had an issue, and I'll allow Jerry to go first.
I'm sorry. Please. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're right.
Jerry, yes, this is a time of respect. We currently have a proposed agreement from Olmstead Falls Commissioners. There are a couple of very technical tweaks that have to be made in that contract. And what we anticipated is that we could go forward and get the commissioners' approval and then make those amendments a little bit later so that, so that that could be going on. As a result of the conversation and discussion that happened at our last meeting, there were some concerns about the obligations that the commission would be committing to. And from some of the comments that came from the engineer, I felt there needed to be some more substantive changes to that agreement so that the commissioner, if they have an out on a project, should for some reason in the future, would not be prepared to go. And there's a provision in that it requires us to expend a substantial amount of money. And I want to put a provision in there that gives us an out on that. So there's going to be some more substantial amendments to that agreement. So rather than approve it and amend it, I think we kind of need to hold on it a little bit and have a final agreement in effect. What I need to get back from the commissioners is we've already had Olmstead Falls approve it. I don't want to send them a new agreement, have them go through all the steps they have to do to get that approved, come back to the commissioners, and then have us reject it. So I would like to at least get some informal expression of intent from the commissioners, if the concept is acceptable to you before we submit to that to Olmstead Falls. In that respect, then, we get to the money issue. I think there were some questions expressed about, are there any other ways to reduce the cost of this? And at this time, I'm a little confused from what the engineers told me as to whether or not there is a way to do that. The initial indication from the engineer's department of work was that this is it, this is what we're going to have to expend on it. And then the estimates that the commissioner gave at the last minute is what it's going to cost the individual landowners, and there's not too much you can do from that. Talking with Mr. Conney today, he said there are some options. There are guarantees, but he feels that we can get some grants. And after speaking with him, I felt, you know, I think I expect commissioners are going to want to have a face-to-face conversation to you to pursue that. So what I have for you right now is an indication that there may be a way to reduce the cost to the landowners, but I don't have the technical expertise to tell you what those are, which the current son had to give that to you. So I indicated, I asked if we could hold this for a little while. He indicated we could. I believe, Commissioner Blair, you're going to be gone next week.
Yes.
Is that right? So it'll be at least two weeks before we have a full board back. And I indicated to him that's probably what I would recommend to the board.
Commissioner, I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Conney this afternoon in his capacity as the Cemetery Engineer. One of the issues that started this whole event was our concern for recovering the outlay of general fund assets as an advance to do this connection. If in fact, we have terms and conditions in the contract that Mr. Anderson is able to secure when he comes back, that are suitable, that state that should we not go forward with the project, we don't have to pay this fee, that this is an agreement, in the event we decide to move forward and make the connection. That'll give us time. At that point, I would urge you to advance the money for the project when it's needed, and authorize Mr. Conney to go ahead, so that he can seek public works dollars, issue two dollars, grant dollars, and put a package together so that we can see an all-in cost that will be exclusive, excluding those dollars are able to receive to offset. And at that point, we can make a better decision on how to, whether to move forward with the project. Because without those additional dollars from other sources, the costs, I believe, are going to be prohibitive to the few homeowners that are served. That said, that doesn't alleviate our problem with this package plan. We have an EPA problem. But I think that we need to incrementally and step-by-step look at the options, explore them, exploit them, and if we have to move to another one, we move to the next one until we find one that's going to be a cost-effective solution. So for right now, if Mr. Anderson can secure that language and bring it back to it in the next two weeks, I think we should, we should move forward. We won't have to pay anything, we do not.
I would like to hold it until that language is brought back in paper form and so that we can see it.
So we're going to carry this on the agenda for two weeks, and you're going to put all those nuts and bolts together?
Two weeks, yes.
Thank you, you're not...
Anything on new business?
Nothing here.
I have none.
Board personance?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Session. Ms. Swire?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Public comment?
Before we go into executive session, is there anyone here that has any comments or questions for the board, or anyone? Please don't hesitate, because like I said, if you have a question, you're not going to get an answer unless you ask.
... Ron Schwankenwald, five, six, three floor, White Oak Way, North Ridgeville. We now, the Oberlin Design Initiative Board, have wanted to reinforce not just the commissioners, but to the community, the fact that this is a major step in retaining good quality people with technical skills. As we look at retention and expansion on the line of work started there, the people that are coming to our community are really looking for those type of assets for those great facilities. It's a true extension of our workforce development. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? I could just hear questions. I know you have some. Okay, I guess I'm not hearing them. Again, thank you for being here, and we'll be out of executive session shortly.
Ma'am Chair, I move that we proceed to executive session to discuss the issues that were outlined by the administrator and our legal counsel.
Okay, second that.
Ms. Swire?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
I see Phil is hastily beating his way up to the table here. I think since the information is going to be submitted, should be submitted to the prosecutor's office for review, because it may have pending litigation, we shouldn't comment on it.
Regarding the union agreement?
Yes. Is that satisfactory, Mr.?
Fine.
So any submission, I will make the request of the organ unit, but I will make the request to be submitted to our attorney.
So I will amend my motion to...
No, we already voted on it. We already voted on it.
Well, I don't think that...
I don't think you need to...
You don't need to amend it.
Don't need anything?
No, it's just a statement of how we're going to do it.
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, Phil.
No problem. Can I move to adjourn now?
You're allowed, ma'am.
All right, I will.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Where's Karen?
Thank you.
They can all be composted. All these things will go back to nature, using only air and water. Nature will recycle these and numerous other items back into rich soil to benefit your garden or shrubs. Turn it on the ground, or tumble it in special drums. Composting saves landfill space and can save you money. Composting can turn into a fun project for the entire family.